Yes, you can. Let's see. Well, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission regular scheduled meeting Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Tonight, we're at the Veterans Memorial Building on Surf Street. And I want to thank, oh, I got the wrong one. I didn't change it. No, we're not. Tonight, we're at the Community Center Building. Thank you for catching that. I want to thank everybody who's here in person. Really, we appreciate you coming. And I want to thank for those that are on Zoom and those that are also watching on TV. We really love having you here. We're very happy to spend Tuesday night with you guys. There's four of us tonight. We do have a quorum. Asia King won't be, Commissioner King won't be joining us tonight. She's not feeling well. And she's, you only get two Zooms a year, and she's going to save her Zooms for later during her delivery in her pregnancy. So, but I did talk to Asia, and we've got some notes on her interests relative to the case. Let me introduce Mike Rodriguez, Commissioner Mike Rodriguez. He's the vice chair. Commissioner Joe Graffia to my left, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. We have a quorum, and I will call us to order. And Eric, a moment of silence?
Yeah, I was thinking about the folks in the east of the United States that are affected by tornadoes and their families. Thought to give them a moment.
Thank you all. Planning Commissioner announcements, commissioners? Joe? Hearing none. Let me open public comment. Andy, what's that? Oh, oh, thanks. Thank you all. Public comment. So we're opening public comment for anyone who wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, or if you can't stay for the entire meeting, would like to speak now, we welcome your comments. Please tell us your name if you're willing.
Good evening, Commissioners. Paul Donnelly of Morro Bay. It's nice to have a meeting here, I guess, because you don't think you've ever met here before.
First time.
But before this building was here, before it was built, it used to be a little building at the end of the parking lot. It was the old wrecked building. It's where the meetings used to be held and before it was moved down to the vets hall. But here in this building, about 35 years ago, there was a dedication and a big old giant bronze plaque was placed in the lobby to dedicate this building, and it has vanished. And I wonder what happened to it. Since you guys have been talking about historic preservation lately, that's part of the city's history right there. Yeah. The other thing, and I mentioned this to the city council last week, too. At the city hall, there used to be a bunch of portraits of the past mayors, city council members. They too have vanished. And I wonder what happened to those. It'd be nice if they were put back up, maybe in this building, so the public can see who used to be around back when. And again, part of the city's history, it isn't so much by development as something that's happened internally and why they're gone. So it'd be nice to find out. Thank you so much.
No, no planning commissioner pictures?
What's that?
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else like to speak? Hey, Bill?
Thank you, Bill Martini. I was just out at the Rock Parking Lot. And I was thinking that, you know, for the last several years, it seems like it's been changing. A long time ago, I believe there were plans to kind of beautify it, you know, make it look a little more like Tidlin's Park, green it out, you know. And I was just wondering what happened, because now, to me, if you look out there, it's just nothing but massive cars. It almost looks like a Walmart parking lot that's been abandoned. I mean, it's really terrible for probably one of the most scenic spots in Morro Bay. If there's, if these plans ever went through, or if they got on hold, or if there's something we can do to more aesthetically, you know, kind of soften the parking lot and, you know, design something if it hasn't already been designed. I know George Lee, when he was city council member, asked, he wanted to do steps from the parking lot down to the beach, and it somehow got shuffled and never happened. And that was another phase that I think for the public to actually, you know, instead of going over the riprap, getting down to the beach, if we could do something that George had always wanted to accomplish. But anyway, in general, look at the overall plan and see if there's any way that we can kind of upgrade it aesthetically and everywhere else. So, anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else here tonight? Anthony, anybody in the queue?
Welcome. Hi, my name is Cindy Muir, and I live in Morro Bay. And I have never been to a planning commission meeting before, but I feel so strongly about it. I wanted to come and say to you, please don't change the zoning to accommodate any kind of industrial on the Embarcadero. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Hi.
Hi, Natalia Marsoya. I'd like to second that. I, you know, I'd like to say, as a resident, I'm upset with what happened, because I think the planning commission actually kind of opposed change of height. And it was, it was an item that you conceivably was the reason our past mayor is no longer mayor. And we have another new city council, two new city council members. I think that was an issue in there. And after that happened, the past mayor, I don't like to be critical, but he voted with the city council to override. Am I getting that right? Anyway, I think I am. Override the recommendation of the planning commission, and it seems indefensibly wrong, ethically, for them to have done that under the circumstances. So perhaps somebody could make a recommendation that a, an outgoing council doesn't make a ruling concerning something that was an issue, you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments, public hearing, or public comments right now? Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue?
Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll close the public comment period. We're on to the consent calendar. Eric, you had some comments?
Just with respect to item A3, which is the minutes of March 7th, 2023. Item C1, I talked about Skinner Pierce, but it only just said Skinner. And I'd just like to add Skinner's last name into there, Skinner Pierce. I'll provide this to you guys later. And also, it said Eric Crawford spoke, but I think it was actually Erica Crawford that spoke. And that's my only corrections to the minutes. And otherwise, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve.
Good catch. And please, I welcome the motion.
And Chair Roshan, I'll be abstaining from those minutes. So it's important that you three agree to that. These changes, I was in Hawaii.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm seconding the motion.
Scott, would you pull the commission?
Thank you. I'm sure Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Motion passes 301. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're on, there's no public hearing tonight, so we're on to new business. And let me introduce case number CUP 23-05. This is the Seashell Estates Concept Review. And let's start, I think, best with the staff presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Roshan. AGP, I can tee that from here? Okay, thanks. It's on here, yeah. It's up, it's right there. I think that does work. Yeah, if it doesn't, let me know, and I'll poke the button for you.
Okay. All right. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Nice to be here this evening. This is a conceptual review application. Is no planning application has been filed for land use approvals. It's just a conceptual review for the properties located at 301 to 390 Seashell Cove. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the potential of a future multifamily development at this project. The applicant is requesting planning commission feedback and input. That was good timing. We're hoping to get a different type of feedback tonight. As it relates to a future multifamily development at this property, and on the screen, you see a vicinity map. The property is located at the southern entrance to the city, near the intersection of Highway 1 and the South Bay Boulevard exit. Okay, I think I'll need you to next slide. Okay, a little zoomed in image here. This is currently 10 vacant residential lots. It's a combined project area of 4.7 acres. This, these properties were created in 2009 with a subdivision approval that was known then as the Seashell Estates subdivision. It was created as a conservation subdivision, also established CCNRs and a rather extensive design manual that spoke to design requirements for the properties. It was approved as a single family residential subdivision. The current land use is a low-density residential, and the zoning, the adopted zoning as of the adoption of the city's November 2022 zoning code is RL, which stands for residential low density. Under the previous zoning code, the zoning was RAPD, which correlates to the low-density residential. Next slide. So just to give a little bit of background about why we're here, in 2022, it was last summer in June that the applicant brought forth a request for a general plan and LCP land use amendment to facilitate what was described in as multifamily residential up to 70 units. And that was based on the gross density of four and a half acres. A medium-density designation would correspond to up to 15 dwelling units per acre. The planning commission's action at that public hearing did not recommend a land use change to high density. That was the request, without also an accompanying project for review. The applicant, the planning commission's discussion at that meeting was to provide, wanting some more surety about what would happen at the site, and requested that, that they're recommend, that they would do not, excuse me, that they do not make a favorable recommendation to the city council without also having a project to review. The city council looked at the project in August of 2022, and their direction was that it be brought back through the planning process, and that to acknowledge planning commission's input, that an ad hoc committee be created that would look at density in the area, in this area where this, these properties are, and then the adjacent neighboring property. And that it'd be brought back through the process and look at potential to increase supply of multifamily housing in this area of the city. So to continue with this applicant, this effort, the applicant is here tonight with some conceptual review plans to start this process, and really to hopefully get planning commission's early input on the potential of what they're currently showing as 37 multifamily units. And they do show some potential design and layout. This is not locked in stone. It is very conceptual. They really are at an early stage in the process, and hopefully to get some good feedback tonight. Next slide, please. Their preferred goal is to develop up to 70 units. That's what they discussed last summer. Of course, that is dependent upon the development restrictions that are on the, on the property that, that's discussed in the staff report. And I have a slide coming up that talks about some of these. But to start with the site plan, on the screen, you can see the subdivision, the, when the subdivision was created, the tract improvements were put in, and that was the extent of what was completed with the 2009 approval. So they put in the street, the cul-de-sac, but none of the 10 lots were developed. So that's kind of this unfinished state that exists today. The conceptual plans show the placement of, as I said, it's currently designed as 37 three-bedroom units. They're approximately 1,800 square feet in size. Each of them show a single-car garage with a second tandem parking space provided. The buildings are arranged across the site as a cluster of six two-story buildings. They are currently showing as 29 feet, 6 inches in height. They're not dimensioned from average natural grade, so it's unknown if that is actually the true height. The, of course, the design is dependent, is subject to change pending development of a full planning application. Next slide. And so part of the, as I alluded to, part of the subdivision, and as was discussed in the June 2022 approval, the Seashell Estates subdivision was created as a conservation subdivision. And so with that, there were numerous development restrictions that included of the four and a half acres, only approximately one and a half acres is buildable under those current tract approvals. They have requirements for 20-foot front setback. There is a requirement for a reduced second floor lock coverage to the first floor. The building height is at 18 and a half feet. There are additional open space, ESHA requirements, and rare plant species requirements, slope considerations. And just as an example, so this is a zoomed in of the site plan that you saw on the previous page. What you see on this page is the rear lots at the end of this subdivision. And each of the current lot shapes are outlined in blue. What you see in the, and this is just, you know, for purposes of illustration, I just showed a couple of the lots, because otherwise it'd be too hard to see on the, on the screen. But what you see shaded in the blue polygon is what is the development limit line. And the development limit line is the area with, with the subdivision created as your area where you could place the development. And within that development, the tract approvals require that there be a maximum of 6,600 square feet of buildable envelope that you could move around dependent on site placement. And within that 6,600 square foot, the tract approvals dictate that no more there, there be no more than 3,600 square feet of building envelope. So as you can see, it's a bit complicated and convoluted, but it was pretty unique to this vision of this large lot, custom, single-family subdivision that really seems kind of inconsistent with a multifamily rental housing development. So, as described in the staff report, if the applicant were to move forward with an application, they would need to either amend the tract map approvals or re-subdivide the lot, because what this image is showing here, if they can't exceed the blue shaded line, you can see that there are blue, sorry, not blue. There are structures that encroach outside of the shaded blue development limit line. That's just kind of a, just to kind of give you an idea of just one of the many development restrictions that are on.
So Cindy, to be clear, that limitation is part of the conditions that was imposed on the?
It's part of the, the tract map approvals. It's recorded with the CCNRs, so it's recorded against.
And that was the condition on the previous?
On the two, yes. With the idea that?
Planning commission.
Right, that there'd be this like net zero, really low-density type of, you know, and that worked when it was a single-family home. Yeah. Single-story. Next slide, please. So the design of the home, the applicant is showing a, this is the color rendering that shows a mix of exterior materials, siding, stucco, stucco, excuse me, and use of a stone accent material. The plans show that this is, you know, as again, I said earlier, 29 and a half feet tall as a two-story building. Of course, it's not dimensioned from average natural grade, so there would be further analysis that would need to be determined on what the true height would be. And certainly, we would be requesting planning commission's input as it relates to height and the visibility of its location in the city. The applicant does include a specific color rendering that is included as Exhibit C to your staff report. There is a picture of a home at the top of that Exhibit C, and that is a rendering that was included for Lot 1 when that went through the process, approximately 2017, for a previous approved home that ended up not being built, and those permits on that Lot 1 expired. That shows the design of a home that would be consistent with the design manual for the Seashell Estates design, design manual, excuse me. So, and again, if a change to the approved design were pursued, again, that would require an amendment to the tract approval. Next slide, please. This is the Exhibit C that is in the staff report. The image at the one, that was the proposed rendering that was approved with Lot 1. The planning commission approved a CDP and a CUP. That entitlement has since expired. They did not proceed. Next slide. And then this is a representative floor plan that shows the three-bedroom units. They are all proposed at the same size, which is approximately 1,800 square feet. Next slide, please. And they've included a typical landscape plan. In this one, the red line on the screen there shows an increased buffer setback. There is riparian ESHA habitat that is along lots of 1 through 3 with the stream corridor at the northwest corner of the properties. Next slide, please. And then this is, was not included in the staff report, but this is an alternate plan depicting what 70 units might look like. Again, very conceptual, not, not certainly part of any application or development tonight, because again, should they decide to pursue the application, they would have to go through the process of either amending the tract map approvals, or consider the potential of re-subdividing the lots. This, I believe, shows them not going across the lot lines. But again, there are other tract considerations that would require their compliance with. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of some of the details here in the staff report. The applicant is willing to pursue multifamily development at this site, is interested in that, is, is interested in helping the city meet its housing goals. They are interested in seeking planning commission input and feedback as it relates to the potential of multifamily housing at the site. Certainly, the plans that were submitted with the planning commission are not the, the end-all, be-all. It is just their early conceptual plans. As I stated earlier in the second bullet, the project as it currently sits does exceed that development limit line, building footprint height, parking, some of the other requirements that would need amendment or a new approval. The next step in the process after tonight, after the planning commission would provide its feedback, would be putting together an application for coastal development permit, conditional use permit, and tentative tract map approval, of course, along with an associated request for a general plan, local coastal plan, land use amendment, and zoning amendment, because our zoning code is adopted. In addition, there are inclusionary housing ordinance requirements that would apply to the property. And so as it stands right now, are, under our new zoning code, that would require 10% of the units be deed restricted to either low, very low, or moderate income households. For example, based on state guidelines, the income limit for a household of two persons at a low-income range is 70,000. So you can make up to 70,000 and be considered low income. That's just to give you a number in your head. In, or they can choose to pay in lieu fee, which is $25 per square foot, not counting, or excuse me, $25 per square foot for the whole size of the unit. And then, of course, there are, state law does provide options to developers for density bonuses and other concessions to assist in the development of additional housing. The conversations we've had to date is that this would be market rate housing, so inclusionary housing would apply, and they'd be subject to, 10% would be required to be deed restricted. Next slide. And so under the current land use designation that they have, sorry, I've got a typo there, not design, land use designation, the maximum density currently is up to four dwelling units per acre. The prior property approvals do place a number of competing development restrictions on the site that kind of limit that density. The city's density calculations are based on net, not gross, so it's not necessarily just the dwelling units multiplied by the number of acres. The conceptual plans showing the 37 units, they are interested in potentially going up to 70 units. That number is to be determined based on further evaluation of these development constraints. And of course, as I said, there, it would require a general plan and LCP land use and zoning amendment in order to facilitate this development. But the applicant's project, and you know, as we said, is consistent with city housing goals. Now, it's consistent with city housing goals. Are they building low-income housing? They're currently talking about building market rate housing, but the city has multiple housing goals. We want to see affordable housing. We also want to see multifamily housing of any kind. That is, that is definitely a deficit the city has had. We're really good at building single-family housing. Very, very few, I can count on one hand, the number of multifamily housing units in the last decade. So it does, it is consistent with city housing goals. The planning commission can certainly weigh in on your priorities for what goals you want to see accomplished. Next slide, please. So staff's recommending the planning commission provide input and feedback to the applicant. They are available on Zoom, and they, and they do have a presentation that they are hoping to present via Zoom. I've listed some bullet counts, bullet points here on this, on the screen, just for some suggested areas of consideration for planning commission discussion. Just to, you know, kick it off is consideration, some things that, you know, staff's hoping to get feedback on would be its project location at, at the area of town. This is, you know, gateway entrance to the city. It would be adjacent to the Bayside Care Center, which is also a two-story development. Building design and materials, the unit count or bedroom count, this is designed currently as only three-bedroom units. Affordability, as I said, they're proposing it as market rate rental housing. Is there a desire to see moderate, low, very low, or critically low-income housing units? And then some feedback on pedestrian connections. There is a bus stop. It's not technically, it depends on the definition of what's walkable, but the closest bus stop is on the other side of the Highway 1, the South Bay Boulevard off-ramp, closer to Quintana. And then certainly, you know, that would be informed by traffic impact analysis when the project comes forward. And then, you know, last point is, as I've discussed, is there are existing tract approvals, which provide some limitations, but potentially those can be amended depending on what that future development application looks like. So I'll leave it there. That's my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
So Commissioners, questions for staff? I'd like to start. Normally, when we have conceptual review, it's, it's actually a proposed project. And what I see here is 37 units asking for maybe 70. And what I see here is thirty-seven units asking for maybe seventy. So this is, um, a conceptual plan with a emphasis on concept. This is not really a proposed project. So let's be super clear about that.
Right.
And that is unusual for us. Um, I would like to say thank, just thanks to staff who have tried so hard, and I know you guys have worked a long time on this project. Because I think the idea of doing, uh, something beyond, like doing multifamily is extraordinary idea. So thank you for pursuing that. I guess my second question would be, you mentioned next steps. I'm unclear. The next steps, you would re, you would change the zone and reconfigure the lots without a project? Is that what you're proposing?
No. Um, so the, so the next steps would be the planning commission feedback would be used to inform, uh, the development of what their application would be. Um, yes, we do still have some unknowns about what the number, the unit count would be, um, and some of the other details, but their next steps would be to develop an application there. Any requests for a land use amendment or zoning change would come with the project.
With the project. And the lot change, is that, when does that happen? Does that happen with the project as well?
So I'm gonna back up a step.
Yeah, please.
Um, so, um, city council has current goals that talk about the land use change. Um, so that exists out there. It doesn't talk about it with the project. Um, the, talking about it with the project, though, is, um, part of the result of the ad hoc committee, um, discussions that we've had and our discussions with the applicant and, and I obviously, you know, Cindy's presentation did a great job. There's a number of constraints related to this project. Um, and, uh, the, the applicant, to this point, hasn't done the dive into which way he wants to go. Um, am I gonna use the existing tract approvals and try to amend them, or does it make more sense for them to re-subdivide it, maybe just create one big lot and put their development on it because it's multifamily housing?
But that reset, that change, the track change, the, uh, changing subdivision map, that would happen with the project as well?
Correct.
Okay, clear. Um, and if you could do one more favor for everybody, uh, the ad hoc committee, Scott, would you tell the public and put it on the record, who was, who, who the members were on that, on that group and where you think the outcome was?
Okay, so the, uh, the committee was formed, um, and Cindy touched on this earlier. It was, um, because the council gave, um, direction to move forward with the land use change, which is contrary to the planning commission's desire, right? The planning commission did not make that recommendation in moving the zoning code or moving it forward, their project forward, when we brought it to you. Um, so, uh, they did two things. They said, hey, go pursue the land use amendment, staff, us. And then, um, they said, hey, we'd like to, you know, we understand that the planning commission's concerns. They actually, you know, thought there was validity there. And they thought, hey, one option might be to, you know, have a, form an ad hoc committee, which was, um, which was city staff, myself, Scott Collins. Um, there were, uh, two planning commissioners, uh, yourself, Chair Roshan, uh, our, uh, who was then vice chair and the then-chair, uh, Susan Stewart. Um, and then we had a, uh, we had two council members, um, um, former Mayor John Heading and current council member, uh, Jennifer Ford. And then we had two, uh, members from the chambers, government affairs committee. Um, that was Jeff Echols and Stephen Peck. Um, and then, uh, chamber staff, uh, CEO Eric Crawford.
Yeah, and so far, so good. So, and what was the outcome of those several meetings? And it, could you also give a quick, so everybody knows and hears the scope? Because we talked to more than just this applicant.
Good point. Um, so we did, um, so the ad hoc committees met, uh, twice, wants to discuss this particular piece of property and wants to discuss the larger Shepherd Martz property that surrounds, uh, the Casa de Flores, uh, Bayside Care Center. Um, and so we talked to both owners about their desires to potentially upzone the properties, change the land use designation to create multifamily housing. You know, there was, there were certainly concerns about the location at the south end of town, um, you know, being sort of isolated, right? Um, from the sort of core center of town, um, certainly valid concerns. Um, you know, issues of what it might look like because this is a gateway area of the city. That was a, a, a consistent theme. Um, you know, his desires to maybe to potentially, you know, avoid, um, daylighting rooftops at, above the ridge lines, those types of things came out of it. Um, and then, you know, a desire to look at, um, different unit sizes, maybe some additional affordable, um, housing units in, included in the, in the, in the project if possible. Um, and those were the, I think, the general, like, significant themes that came out of it. There was a number of other smaller, you know, topics that were discussed, but I would say that was the, you know, kind of the larger part and what a, and what a, like a layout on the larger, um, property Shepherd Martz might look like.
And just for clarity, do you think there was an outcome with that group relative to an upzone versus a, a specific project application?
Uh, there was discussion along both lines, um, right? Uh, the, you, the discussion was what the project might look like. So that was the, that was the heavy theme there. I mean, the council at that point had already given direction to pursue the land use change. Um, I think, uh, it was made clear, though, that there was a desire to see what the, you know, the projects might look like, what could be included in them, that type of thing. In fact, one of the reasons we're sitting here today is, you know, kind of the outcome of that. We were to a point where, while you indicated earlier, uh, it might not be the rise to the level of like the normal concept review. There's really, you know, almost a fully developed plan, which is like, say, the norm that you've seen with libertine, the, uh, the Harbor, uh, Hotel Project, uh, six units on the, on Harbor Street there. Um, and even, uh, the hotel, um, project over on, uh, forty-one. Uh, and then, uh, Bible by the High School, and then also the Affordable Housing Project right up the street from that. Those were probably when you saw them on concept reviews were, were more developed than this. Um, but this was the, the level that they, you know, came forward with and, and requested the review and, and receive input on, so that's why we're here.
And, uh, again, just to be clear, um, I think part of the parsing was that it's very difficult to condition an upzone to the, to the point of, uh, let's, let's call it a, a comprehensive effort. And with the complexity of the site, the discussion was, do we need a, a project to condition rather than just the upzone? And do you think there, there was no, uh, conclusion on that?
Not, not out of those efforts, and that, that's because we had council members that had already made it, you know, the, the direction of that, that line.
Thank you. Wanted to be clear. Commissioners, other questions?
Yeah, Chair Roshan, um, after reviewing the whole uh, concept that we've been given, and I agree with Commissioner Roshan, we don't really have it fully developed. We only have a, an idea. But let me tell you what I thought about, and I'm glad you have that chart up there. Unit count and bedroom count. Why don't we have one bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, two bath, three bedroom, three? Just fell off. And to me, that goes directly to affordability. So you're gonna have people coming forward that want to buy a three-bedroom, three-bath versus possibly a one-bedroom or two-bath that they can afford. So those things just hand in hand, but out of that whole list, those are the main drivers for me to see a fully developed plan with more than just three-bedroom, three-bath or two-bath, because we're gonna have people that can afford two, possibly, maybe even a one-bedroom, and I've seen those fully developed plans where you have one, two, three bedrooms. I'm glad you put it up there because that's the thing that just popped out at me. What are we doing this three? Bedroom, fully developed, you know, uh, residential development and not considering less bedrooms for more affordability, less, um, saving square footage.
So that is a question.
Yeah, that's, so that's a question, but I thought I'd throw that out there because I want to spend most of my time, at least my time there, because that'll really get us to fully develop.
Was that discussed with the applicant?
The, the unit count, so the seventy units that the, the alternate plan I showed, those are, um, smaller units, so they're about eight hundred square feet. And I don't have the exact, um, unit mix off the top of my head, but certainly, that's something that, yes, we discussed with them and that, you know, they're not sold on three bedrooms. It's just really just kind of a starting point to have that conversation.
And they can, they're, they're gonna be speaking later, so they can certainly speak to those questions, too.
Eric. I'm gonna ask Asia's question, which was Asia's last bullet point. Uh, Asia King, Commissioner, who's absent tonight. She was curious as to, uh, the city's thoughts on the adjacent, uh, floodplain A and whether that, uh, impacts the density. And so, in other words, here's, I'll just read it out. Please ask city staff or the applicant to address the property's adjacent flood, uh, zone A floodplain and whether or not it will be impacted by increased density.
Yeah, so, yeah, it would because, um, I, I did have a chance to talk to Asia by phone and, um, also answer her questions. So this is an area that is to the, would be to the left of the cul-de-sac, the northwest area, and that is, um, an area that's adjacent to Esha, so it would be required to have a fifty-foot, uh, buffer setback. And it, it does impact density, um, city.
That's the creek setback that was discussed in two thousand nine.
Right, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Joe.
My question is, uh, I have to confess that when, uh, the ad hoc committee was, the suggestion was accepted to, to fund the ad hoc committee. I, I assumed that at the culmination of the ad hoc committee's work, that there would be a report as to conclusion or findings, because I think their studying of the property would be enormously valuable to the planning commission, but I gather that isn't the plan. Am I correct that there isn't, there won't be a report forthcoming as to the work of the ad hoc committee?
Um, yeah, there was no, there was no direction along those lines that came out of those efforts.
Okay.
Commissioner, I have, do have one more question for staff before we go to the applicant. Could you explain a little bit, um, under the previous, uh, conditions, the, you know, conditions of approval for the, the current track map, what do those restrictions norm mostly address? Could you give us an overall response? Is it, was it environmental? Was it? Because there are substantial restrictions on the properties. Can you give us an idea how those were established?
Uh, so, two things really. They mostly had to do with, um, the nature of it being a conservation subdivision, which is a term that's in our subdivision ordinance, um, and that prescribes, um, reduced setbacks, low-density, um, pattern of development. Um, the area that would be approved, uh, where the home would be, um, developed, the, the condition includes that the remainder of the property in each of these lots are, you know, are about like twenty thousand square feet or larger, um, or much larger. Uh, the remainder of that property would be required to be put into permanent conservation, um, easement. We, we've done a few other conservation subdivisions in town. Um, the second half of the, um, analysis was, is that the vision for the subdivision was, um, this net-zero Sea Ranch-esque style of like low-impact-living subdivision and Sea Ranch, as, as, you know, for those who aren't familiar, is just really kind of more of this like, you know, living with the earth, you know, no-impact, um, style of development. And so, um, I think at that time, it was approved in two thousand nine. The economy was such that they started developing this project in two thousand six and two thousand seven, and, um, the, you know, there was a housing crash in two thousand eight. I think the idea was that they thought that they didn't need the extra density and they, you know, had this grand idea for these, you know, McMansions. I'm not sure, so.
Got it, got it. Neither of you guys were around then, right?
Yeah.
No, we weren't. I, I would say, and I think maybe one of the things you were trying to get at there, uh, Chair Roshan, was, you know, like, there's a lot of constraints on here and limited development footprints and those types of things, and it is a convoluted subdivision and the approvals are convoluted. There is certainly more room available to develop on than was prescribed in the, either that, you saw the development footprints that Cindy said. There's actually another footprint inside of that that you can move the building around inside of, which makes it really difficult to like discern what's going on there and that. So that, that's what I'm saying. There's actually more land available on the site to develop, and the constraints were, we had some, um, issues with some vegetation. There was, uh, was it, what was that? Was that the?
There's a.
Blockman Dudley, was that?
Yeah, Blockman's Dudley. Uh, there was a habitat mitigation and monitoring plan that also really kind of impacted, uh, developable areas.
And then the Esha setback that Cindy referred to earlier, which kind of cut some of it out. So those were kind of the, the, the main constraints that, that they shrunk down that four-plus acres to the one-point-five.
So, uh, just to finish that, uh, we did get a letter from Betty Wenholtz, and she addresses this issue. And it would be, I think, helpful for all of us to sort of understand why those conditions happened and where they came from. So that's something we could get at a later date, right? The, just the explanations, because it's a very unusual set of conditions. And, and the extrictions, the restrictions seem severe. So I'm trying to understand what generated those. Make sense?
It does. I, I don't know that we're gonna have great answers for you, but yes.
We can, we can at least see what was said.
Yeah, the, yeah, we can look at minutes and things like that.
Okay, great.
One last, yeah, before we, um, move to the applicant, I just wanted to throw out there. I should have added density. So when you're dealing with number of bedrooms and unit count and affordability, you're also gonna be looking at densities. And I think densities have changed with state law. You know, what can you do now versus what could you do then, right? So the applicant may be able to do more. Let's just throw that out there, based upon new state laws that have passed for bonuses and everything else. The other thing I wanted to throw out there is the fact that in June twenty-twenty-two, I guess, uh, there was a mitigated negative declaration that would have moved forward with this. And I was wondering, are there gonna be any other environmental, you kind of mentioned that, Cindy, environmental reports or requirements, you know, environmental reports versus, uh, mitigated negative declaration, so.
Right, so the, the MND that was prepared for the land use change last summer contemplated that the project would be developed within the, the constraints of the tract approvals. Um, there's a little bit of wiggle room if, if they're making minor changes, but if they're doing a full-scale new project, re-subdividing, if they're doing major changes, um, then potentially, yes, it would require updated environmental review. Um, yeah.
Good. Thank you. Okay, Joe.
Uh, I, I seem to recall that in the, in the morally general plan, the recommendation that this property would be upzoned to seven to fifteen units. My, my question is, was that specifically for this property or the, or the much larger region? I'm trying to, trying to unearth what kind of discussions were, there were, if any, specifically focused on this property that prompted the recommendation of seven to fifteen units per acre.
Uh, that came out of the, the previous city council's goals discussion. Um, and, you know, what, and the conversations that we were having with the, with the, with the, with the property, uh, um, they thought that that was, they were, like, you've heard us say, you, you have a thirty-seven-unit project in front of you, then you say, well, here's one that fits seventy. They've been trying to like, figure out like, what makes the most sense and what's like, they understand that, like, this is very low density out here for, for units per acre and like, okay, you're saying you want multifamily housing, city, but, but do you want multifamily housing? Because we could do more, but are you comfortable with that in it? And I think that's kind of why you're seeing, you know, uh, a couple of different options in front of you. They've looked at different layouts and they're really probably trying to figure out whether the cities is actually comfortable with higher-density housing out here, just given where it's at and those types of things.
So, so this, so the, so the, the former administration specifically looked at this property in, in formulating that recommendation. I get that.
Yeah, specifically, it's, it's literally written out in the goals that way.
And, and one other thing, too, um, before this project was approved in two thousand nine, the property owner at that time had, uh, spent a couple of years trying to develop the property as workforce housing for the workers at the Bayside Care Center. So there, there was previous movement on, you know, multiple units at this site. Uh, for, for whatever reasons, the, that fell apart around two thousand six or seven-ish, and then it turned into this, you know, single-family subdivision project.
So when, uh, just for super clarity, Scott, when we redid our, uh, our zoning map, this, this property was not included in any kind of zone change at that time?
No, it's, it's still RL.
What was the prompt between when we introduced the new zone map to this, uh, upstone? What was the reason, the cause?
What was the reason that it stayed at RL?
Why did we look at it upzone after we had just completed our, our new zoning map?
We were going through the adoption process for the city's general plan and zoning code, and we didn't want to delay it because the environmental, uh, impact report for that project had not, uh, anticipated that land use change, and we would have had to have stopped. Um, we were involved with the general plan for about seven years and the zoning code.
But the idea came after, we had already considered, you know, what, what zoning changes we were gonna make, right?
Uh, I mean, this, the, this proposal didn't like, come forward in the middle of those things, other than like, they did, there was some discussion by the applicant. It came to a couple of the planning commission meetings, I think, and even city council meetings and kind of made a pitch for it.
So it was the proposal from the applicant that prompted the, the upzone?
As part of the goal, into the goals? Yes. Oh, you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions, uh, staff? Thank you for your patience. Uh, kind of important to get clarity on this. Is the applicant online?
Uh, yes, they are.
Can we welcome them?
It's unmuted.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Want to share the screen?
We can, welcome.
Okay, welcome. Uh, thank you, and have good evening.
And have a good evening to commissioners, appreciate your time tonight. And I want to say that the staff has worked hard on this diligently, and we appreciate it very much. And I just, I just wanted to kind of go through a few things with you before I show this PowerPoint, which is limited tonight, but just to get you a feel for starting development, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Steiner's been in the business for 55 years. He's built over 650 homes in the Central Valley, 566 apartment units, 150,000 square feet of commercial buildings, Idaho, 20 subdivisions, senior gated communities, very prolific Boise and Bradyan area in Idaho. So he's done quite a bit of quality work. He's most interested in the quality of his projects. And I'm gonna show you a few that we've done. Can I have that, please? Thank you. So real quickly, this, this project's in Atwater. It's called Shafer Lakes, and it's 75 units and a gated community. We, we installed the lake, came online in 2008. We sold it out in 2008 and 2009, and one of the most difficult markets we've had. And you can see the gated middle picture, there's the gated area coming in, the lake and the park, we put a park in there. So quite a nice development, and again, shows the great pride that Mr. Steiner takes in his developments. This next one, this is in Merced, California. And this came online to, as well in '08, actually. And it's a mixed-use commercial project, has a kind of a diverse tenant mix. We've, we've got a gym, we've got three restaurants, we have county offices, satellite healthcare, Conica Minolta dealer. It's very successful, it's gated as well, and well landscaped. Who likes a lot of landscaping and takes pride in that as well. So I'll move along here a little bit. This is, this is a Compass Point Apartments that we did. It's 98 units. There's an adjoining project just starting now, 125 adjacent to it. But this is right when it was completed, so the landscape is not matured out yet. So just, just wanted to show you a few of our things, and these, these obviously you have in your package. But part of the reason this is a moving target for us, if you could understand, is this is a really difficult site. It's, you know, it's, it's on a hillside. So that's been our, the reason we want to get the PD zone, R4PD, that you can condition, but is, is so we, we could kind of spend the money to get to nail down exactly what we're gonna do. And what I want to say as well is, we are, the 70-unit project has one and two-bedroom units. They're 790 square feet for the smaller, for the one-bedroom, which is one and a half bath, and then 990 for the two-bedroom. And I do have those floor plans, they're not in with this tonight, but I could send those over in the morning if we need to. So we, we have some, some options there, and we'd like you to consider it very much. I, but, but we're gonna spend a lot more money. We've already spent quite a bit. We've done the topo surveys and so forth. So we're gonna have to cut and fill a lot of ground on this project. And I, I fully, I, I just can't imagine us being able to get 70 units on it, to be honest with you. So I think it's gonna be small in that, but initially, staff told us they were really looking for housing on the, in Morro Bay, so we, we tried to adhere to that. And as you all know, you, we could build duplexes in California now, that only yield 20 units there. And we could stay on the footprints. But we, we would need to amend the tract map to accommodate what we're trying to do, no matter what we do. So that would, that's a given. But we, we just had to nail down what, which direction we're gonna go in. And, and to do that, we were looking for the PD. And we get the PD, you have control of us anyway. So we will submit plans that I think you'd be very proud of. And we're anticipating some input from you to help us out.
Yeah, this is Jim, Golden Valley Engineering. You know, actually, we worked on those things for almost three years. So Lou really wanted to get it going, but he don't want to spend all the detail, the plan, until we have a zoning. So, so far, we do not have a zoning yet, but he's already did a topo survey, and we did a preliminary grading. So make sure, you know, not many retaining wall and everything comparable with the, the, the grading. He also asked us to, to check the sewer water stuff. I told Lou, today we don't have a zoning. We don't want to design a whole detailed plan, spend more money and without, you know, even have a zoning. So that's why we need to get the zoning. Hopefully you can prove the zone change with the condition, with the plan, you know, the plan. We, and then we can move to next step. So he really don't want to move to next step until we have zoning.
Thank you guys very much. Is, is that your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you again, and, and thanks for your, your interest in working with us. At this point, questions for the applicant commissioners? Just questions, not comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just, I'm glad that they did consider one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, so we didn't see that. So that's why it popped out at me. And number two, you know, there's been a lot of new laws that have passed that may allow for more to happen here at this site, including density. So is the applicant familiar with those laws and how would they apply to this proposed development? I'd like to just ask the applicant that.
Yes.
Oh, can you, can you elaborate on what you're, what you may be able to do with what you've been given?
Yeah, basically, within the development limit, without changing any map condition, we can build the two units per law.
So that just yields 20 units, that's, that's.
That we not, we don't need any zone change, any general plan amendment or anything. We just need to submit a develop, a development plan with a detail, you know, each law.
But our preference is to, to provide more units. And again, we're gonna have to change the tract map to do that.
Got it. For staff, yeah. Okay, thank you guys very much. Can you stay with us? There might be further questions after public comment and.
Sure, yeah.
Commissioner discussion. Joe, you had another question for staff?
Cindy, with respect to the in-lu payments, the, the in-lu calculation is $25 times the square footage of the low-income unit times the number of low-income units, or the total number of units?
The total number of units, including market rate.
Thank you very much. Let's move to public comment. I did want to mention upfront, we got two very strong letters. Thank you, Jeff Heller and Betty Winholtz. The letters were great, and now we'd like to invite public comment now to. And if Jeff and Betty, if you'd addressed the letter for everybody who didn't get a chance to read it, I think that would be helpful for us.
Chair Roshan, I'm gonna keep the three minutes on my phone.
Let's do that, even though for these, these two folks, I'd like not to keep the three minutes. One is because I think Betty was actually a council member when this happened in 2009. So I think her ability to speak to this would be very helpful.
Yeah, and just for the chair's benefit, I did get it at about four o'clock, Betty, so I tried to get through it, I just couldn't. So I asked the chair to allow you the opportunity to, you know, to explain what you wrote. Thank you.
I'll go first then, Betty Winholtz. I was on the city council during this time, and one of our major concerns was that this was on the scenic highway, that we acknowledged that that was a federal designation as well as a state designation. And so we were looking more for things that were friendly to a Frank Lloyd Wright-type of design as opposed to making your mark and, you know, something that's 30 feet tall. So I'll, I'll just try to summarize my letter here. And one of those is that Teresa Drive, and I think we had Teresa Road up on the board, but I think it's really Teresa Drive, is a private road. And it's now going to lead into another private road called Seashell Cove. And so I'm wondering what kind of impact or precedent setting this starts to have with our circulation element, and that we know that in our general plan, our private roads are dressed. And for me, down near me, there's the Colmer Development on Main Street that uses a private road. We know that the Cloisters New Edition is a private road. And the 3300 Panorama that's proposed up in northwest, northeast Morro Bay is also asking for a private road. And my observations about what's in common to these is that this allows the developer to not have as wide of a road, to not provide street parking, that maybe there will or will not be sidewalks. Now, this one did provide for a sidewalk, but I think it allows the developer to reduce the requirements that most of us would normally have in our neighborhoods. And so my question is then, do we want residents to have to be responsible for streets? Or is this really a city issue? And I think that's a, something that needs to be discussed. Secondly, was my concern about the makeup of the chamber with the, the subcommittee, and that who gets to be on that and how many of whoever. And so it really stuck in my face that here's three chamber members, here's two council members, a couple of city count, staff members, and where's the public? And so I think that that's kind of unbalanced and doesn't represent the people. So when we had our vacation rental subcommittee, we had residents and managers and owners on there. So we had more of a well-rounded group going on that came up with the suggestions. And then again, for the property history, I'm glad to hear that there was more history given to you. I was so surprised that when I went back to research what I remembered in my brain and compare it to what was in the minutes and agendas, there isn't any. And I think what happened in that time period was they went to strictly looking at the videos. And so there's no paper documentation. And I think that's real critical because you don't know what happened then.
So the, the videos exist.
The videos should exist. Yeah, we had videos back then. So I think it's real important that, and in particular, you would probably want to see what happened at the planning commission, but what I found online was all under the April 13th, 2009 city council meeting. And that's where the meat of the project is saved in paper form. So I, I think that that needs to be brought forward. And then you did mention the 2005, I was on council at that time also, when we started talking about that. So there's, I should have, didn't go back that far in history. And then we'll just get beyond that. So I, I feel the developer's taking advantage of the state laws, and well, he should, because that's what the, the new law says, you can have four units per one lot. But I do question the kind of lots he's wanting to build. Now, with his presentation, it became obvious that he wants to make his mark. He has very fine properties that he does. He talked a lot about gated communities, that's not who Morro Bay is. Or at least that's not who we have been up to this point. So I would hope that we would stay kind of more low-key, you know, little village-type place that we're not here to mansionize, maybe, is, is, is the old word for that. And then I, I did want to press the point that our workforce housing, if you look at workforce, the people who are working are the single people, are the younger and to older and even widowed people. And so one and two bedrooms is the kind of unit that we need. It's not three-bedroom. And if you look again at the, I, I put in here the slow cog RN, RHNA requirements that have been put on Morro Bay, that even though there is a predominant amount on above moderate, I think that we all know we don't need above moderate here. And so what we need to focus on is that very low and low. And so if that, if, if we really want to provide housing and we really want to provide workforce housing, that's where we're gonna focus, not on the other. The other seems to happen more than naturally here. And then again, I'm gonna do this little disclaimer that I'm not talking about because I knew I would run out of time, the environmental impacts, the constraints that are on the, the tract maps and all that kind of stuff. We know from the sewer plant that this is the same hillside. There's naturally occurring asbestos in the serpentine rock there. So when you start digging in, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned about that. We know about landslides. So all that kind of environmental thing feeds back into why we restricted the four-plus acres down to one-plus acre. You, you just can't, there's not room there to do the kind of thing that you want to do if you're gonna honor the environment or protect the people who are gonna live there. I think that's pretty much most of what I need to say. I did have a question raised from, is, is this rental development or is it ownership? And I'm not clear on that.
I think it's Cindy rental.
So it's purely rental? And so, and then my concern, which I raised back in the day, was I really perceive this as leapfrog development. And I thought at some point that we didn't do leapfrog development, but maybe that's not true anymore in the modern, post-modern times.
And thanks for posting all those links, Betty. They were, they were very, very helpful.
Thank you, Betty. Jeff?
Thank you, planning commissioners, for spending your evenings and many, many hours reading all this information.
We wouldn't have it any other way.
So important for Morro Bay. I want to thank you for all the work that you do. Staff, Scott and Cindy, thanks for your work on this. I'm not gonna try and reiterate all the points in my correspondence, but I would like just to have a dumb question to ask of you, Scott. The upzone that was talked about includes this parcel plus the surrounding parcel, is that right?
No.
Or just?
It would include the four-and-a-half-acre seashell estate.
Just the 4.7 acres, okay. What are the questions? It seems strange to me that we have an ad hoc committee and yet no written document of their findings. And I, I'm not sure that the planning commission should even be commenting on this unless we have some written documentation of what the ad hoc committee talked about. To Betty's point, that's what an ad hoc committee is supposed to do, in my opinion. So they're gonna be rental units. I think, I think if we, if you ask most members of the chamber or residents of the city, when you talk about housing, the only and first word that comes up is affordable housing. I think there's arena category extremely low, I could be wrong. But in my opinion, we need housing for extremely low, very low and low. And our current zoning code does not mandate that. It basically affordable housing and lumps in the moderate and the above moderate. So you could conceivably build 10% of your units at the moderate level, which is not addressing our needs. I think we need to, whether that comes from you to the council, but we need to relook at that, particularly for this property. If any changes are made at all to the tract subdivision map, they need to mandate, I think, 25% affordable units. We need to say 5% at extremely low, 5% very low or something that effect, so that we get what we need. We talk about it over and over again for years. This is a great opportunity for us to get what we need, and also for the developer who got this upzone, which I think was a bit of a gift from the city, frankly, and one of the two people who opposed it on city council. But if we can get what we need in terms of housing, then let's do that. But let's not give away anything. The in-lufy, I just want to comment in general on that. I don't think it's enough. I think we need to increase the in-lufy so that it will drive developers towards building affordable units. You know, we collect funds, but it's really a number of years before that in-lufy accumulates enough to have an impact. So I, I'd like to see that. But again, that's, that's a change that can be great to come from you, from this commission to the council for review. And I guess my last question is, is it possible for the current council to overturn the upzone that was approved by the previous council?
So there was, there was no upzone.
What is, what is it called that we voted on?
There was no.
Excuse my ignorance.
So there was no, there was no upzone of the, of the, of the property. What council had done was to direct staff to pursue the upzoning. What happened, and I mean, I think you probably would appreciate this more than anyone, is we were, you know, like, we were getting ready to take it back and it was coming up right before the election. It didn't seem appropriate to, to, to do that like 11th hour. And so we said, well, let's wait and see what happens and then we can talk to the new council and see what they want to do.
Okay.
And I think we're going to probably have some of those discussions tomorrow at our goal-setting workshop. Please attend.
So just, if you don't mind while you're here, let's be super clear about this because I'm a little confused too. So right now, there is no upzone. It's going to take an action from the new council to move this forward, either with a project or with a simple upzone, right?
Correct. Yeah, the council has to make the decision. There's been no land use change, no zoning change. The direction from council was to pursue it, which was contrary to what the planning commission had recommended when the item came before them. And so, and then that's when the council did that. And then in deference to the planning commission's concerns, formed the ad hoc committee.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, I should know that, but obviously I don't keep up with my own decisions.
It's good, and thank you.
The other, the other thought is, do we need a master plan perhaps for that entire area? Not just the seashell, but the adjacent parcel as well so that the city kind of says, hey, this is what we want, this is what we need, this we plan for it, go for it. I think it will help developers and, and property owners figure out what they, what they can do in advance and, and submit complete projects for review. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Others for public comment on this project?
Evening again, Paul Donnelly, Morro Bay. There is that subdivision map that was recorded. It's a recorded document. When it was submitted as an application, it was a vesting intended map, so it vested in whatever the ordinances were at the time. I believe Betty gave the thumb drive to Mr. Graham here showing that subdivision map. I don't know if you were provided with it or familiar with the map itself, but the restrictions are listed on that last page of that map. The last note on that map says, no further subdivision of these lots is allowed at any time. So to change that, I don't know what findings you would have to make to overcome, but in the recorded documents such as that track map.
Could you say that one more time?
On the, and Mr. Graham has that it's on sheet four, that track map, no further subdivision of these lots is allowed at any given time, anytime. So I don't know how you can change that. The other thing is that the submittal with the package was a grading plan. And the grading plan, to me, copy that right here, is, is going to be very difficult to do, if not nearly impossible to do to make this work. Also, it's, it's missing something vital on the plan, should have recognized that.
Stamp.
Stamp and license as an engineer that did it, that's required by law, should never have been made public without that. So you might want to really consider how that site might be graded. The serpentineite rock that's out there, you would have to jackhammer into it. You've got right next door, a sensitive noise receptor, the bayside center, plus the natural occurring asbestos that might become airborne and into that, that area with the prevailing winds. I believe there's also some other rare plants other than the block, blockman dudlia, there's the calicordis abyssiensis that's out there too. So one of the reasons why all that open space was created because of the sensitive environment that's around there. The other thing is like when they talk in real estate, location, 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 this is a really bad location. There's one, only one way in and out of there. You have the freeway on one side, the power lines on the backside. And you're going to increase the density, which means a concern of fire. That street is painted for, as a fire lane, but I don't know who's going to enforce keeping cars from parking out there. They will. And if something were to happen, like I say, there's only one way in and out of there and it would be a tragedy if that would ever occur, something to consider.
Thank you. Paul, could you give us a little bit of your background? What kind of expertise do you come from?
I'm a registered civil engineer licensed here in the state of Hawaii. I'm also a licensed land surveyor licensed here in the state of Hawaii. I was a former city council member here. I was, I worked for the county of San Luis Obispo for over 27 years. I mean, I'm a private engineering firm that did a lot of subdivisions.
I'm glad I asked. Thank you. Okay, others, Bill, please.
Sure, Bill Martin again. I think housing in Morro Bay absolutely is important. This location is terrible for where it's being proposed. And you're basically leapfrogging out. I mean, normally in a city, you go from high density to low density to like half-acre estates to five acres to ranches. And this is plopping even now for the 10 homes is a little out of sight, you know, out of character. And what I was getting at in Morro Bay is recently, there were discussions a while back on the Chevron property, there's 200 acres that surrounds, you know, on Panorama Drive and that. And I believe you pressed for one home per 40 acres. And this is butting up against actually residential properties and has a facilities right there where this is an isolated island. So I would highly recommend not rezoning or upzoning this property. The half-acre minimums is ideal in this area. And now that they can actually double, instead of 10 homes, you know, with the new ordinance, they can do 20. I think that would be more than sufficient for this particular property, but be totally out of character. And then the other thing is, on top of the county and the coastal also calls highway one a scene highway. And when you come into entries into towns, it's, this is what you see as you're coming into Morro Bay and to see 35 or 30-foot tall, a condo or, you know, a rental unit as your entry into town, I think aesthetically, it's just the wrong project for wrong location. You have the Texico property or the old Texico property, I think it's Chevron now, you have 10 acres next to Delmar School. This is where something like this belongs. And I think there's definitely spots in the town. You actually have our, what is it, like Little Moro Creek Road? You actually have a lot of agricultural land that would be far more suitable to rezone as opposed to this. Thank you.
Bill, thank you very much. Others? Welcome.
Yeah, maybe. Terry Simons, Morro Bay. A little reluctant to even be here tonight for this item. I was amazed and somewhat shocked by what I saw in the package. I will say, I was very pleased to hear that neither of our current planners were here when this original tract was created. And it goes a long ways to help me understand why they're trying to distance themselves so much from this whole situation because it's a mess. We have an applicant that clearly has urban development understanding, flatland understanding, San Joaquin Valley understanding. We do not appear to have an applicant that understands the nature of Morro Bay and an engineering staff that doesn't understand grading on sloped properties, let alone the grading necessity necessitated by this extremely complicated geology and the existing underlying track map. I have not the experience that the applicant and his entity have, but I have done one of the largest projects in Morro Bay, Bay Shore Village, which is, I can't even remember now, it's for 50 or 60 condominium units in a sensitive site on the bay. This is not an undoable project. This project could be done, except for the fact that you have to grade the entire site, bear, bear down on the entire site on, in a geology that is, to say the least, intense. I'm a general engineering contractor and general building contractor. I've spent the majority of my life doing grading and the majority of my life doing grading in San Luis County on extremely complicated sites. So I look at this, I went out and walked the entire site today. And if the planning commission wanted to move forward with this, the first thing you'd have to do would be to remove the ESHAC consideration. How you do that, I have no idea. But this project requires basically regrading virtually every square foot of the site. The only thing that I saw in their grading plan that remained, and it isn't even shown on their grading plan, is the sedimentation basin or, or detention basin at the bottom of the property. But that detention basin is fed by several different routes in the existing track map, none of which are shown in the new grading plan. I studied the new grading plan, much to my amazement. I wondered for a moment why there wasn't an engineer stamp on it. And then I realized no engineer, certainly no qualified civil engineer would be willing to stamp this grading plan. It is so fraught with technical deficiencies that I couldn't even begin, I started trying to make notes. And I was up to about five or six pages of notes on all the technical deficiencies that I found in the grading plan. I said, this is ridiculous. This is not even a concept grading plan. And my biggest fear would be that if this concept grading plan were actually to be moved forward, somebody might actually take it seriously enough to try to go out and grade it. There are roads that have cross slopes in them that exceed any reasonable standard. There are many, many complications where roads abut buildings with very minimum setbacks that the elevation pad defined by the building is so far below the road, you can't make it work without a retaining wall. And yet the applicant's engineer just testified tonight that there won't be any retaining walls. Well, that's just hooey. You're going to have a lot of that in this project.
Great.
I would like to make one recommendation, hopefully to the applicant. There's been a lot of talk about how this property is not suited for this kind of development, and I agree with that. But what it is suited for, and I do have some experience with this, is you have a senior citizen convalescent and retirement complex adjacent to it. And if there's a location, location, my words are simpatico. Sempatico, if you speak Spanish, yeah. But I would look to do some sort of a workforce housing and extended care facility. It's very common with these kinds of facilities to have transitional housing where you can have standalone apartments that you can transition into a convalescent hospital. They shouldn't even be thinking single-family residences, this is a joke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nancy, welcome.
Thank you. Nancy Bass, Morro Bay. Well, I, I think that there have been some dynamite speakers that have already covered most everything that I thought was important about this. Betty covered scenic highway, so did Terry. And that's a big deal. When they built that, were building that hotel over by the high school, you know, we got very protective about our scenic highway. They wanted to cut down those trees. And we wouldn't let them do it. So that's one thing. I, I'd like to see on the screen, one of those photographs of the project itself where it's taken from Teresa Drive and looks up to that seashell. I don't know, I hope you have all been out there, but that is an extremely narrow street. And it comes off of a private street, as Betty said. And there are, generally speaking, about 200 employees in the rest home. And they park on the street, they park in their, in their property. And then there are visitors and then there are people that live there that have vehicles. There's not going to be any room for all of those people. And one-car garages just don't do it anymore because they put things in it. And I know why he wanted three bedrooms. They would make wonderful vacation rentals. Absolutely wonderful vacation rentals. The geologic thing is a biggie, I mean, a really biggie. And maybe if, when they presented their original plan, that it was to be for employees' rest home? Why didn't they do that? They, they probably knew what they were doing. And so, oh, I think Sea Ranch is all one story. At least it was about 20 years ago when I went by.
One and two.
Is it?
Yeah.
So I don't want any zone change or any major changes. What Terry said sounded really good, but that wasn't greedy.
Nancy, thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, Natalia Mussoya. I'd just like to say one more thing. Because, you know, obviously we need workforce housing and all that. But there has been a lot of push about putting in pockets of new development all around and, and this new state laws. And I want to address my main train of thought to the new state laws, which make no sense to me since California has been losing population and growth. I don't know what they're up to, but you have to kind of become a conspiracy theorist here. And it's not good because we've always been able to have communities that directed their own destiny and look. And, you know, I don't think it's a good idea to change that now and shoehorn people into little spaces that they don't want to be in. You know, we want to be in Morro Bay and that's why we're here. And we want Morro Bay not to change. Thank you.
Natalia, thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anybody in the queue?
Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Thank you, Anthony. Last chance. I will close the public hearing. Scott, can we go over a couple of these questions that were raised? Commissioners, if you have specific points you want to raise, can you give us a little bit on the private road issue? Especially when it goes, when the density increases, does that have a downside?
Private roads are common. I think that, I think most of you understand the state of the roads in the city. You know, I mean, the, the cost to maintain them, so the ship doesn't continue to sink on that side of things is somewhere north of $2 million a year. So having private property owners and private development maintain their roads is kind of where the city's gone in more recent times. I think that's just reflective of the city's lack of resources to maintain roads.
The one-way-in.
Can I add on to that one? Sorry, a question, further question.
Go ahead, Eric, yeah.
When does the secondary access requirement kick in on something like, is there such a thing, a certain number of humans living on a specific?
The question about one-way-in, one-way-out.
We have limitations to how far roads can go without, you know, turnarounds and things like that from a fire truck standpoint. The number escapes me at the moment, I apologize. But there are limitations and fire department does look at that from secondary access point. They've taken a look at this and, and they're okay with it with some, some, I think, some changes potentially.
They're okay with it under the current number of units? Have they looked at it with the?
The upzone.
The upzone.
Yes, and they, and they would potentially have some changes to be made from a conditioning standpoint.
The property history, the videos, are they accessible from way back when?
We do have videos from, yes, back in that timeframe, so it's reasonable to assume that we have them somewhere.
I.
Yeah, I believe, I believe we do too. I would just have to go back and look.
I have a totally uninteresting life, so I'd be happy to.
AGP video should have those archived.
Thank you. So we can, we can, we can ask for those and, great. Let's see.
Chair Roshan?
Yeah.
I do see a raised hand from the applicant currently.
Oh, I didn't, but let's finish with these questions and we'll go to the applicant. Thank you for that. The restrictions on the tract map, I think that was raised by Paul Donnelly. Do you know what he's referring to?
There are, I mean, no, there are, there are some restrictions that are recorded on the map, that's correct.
But I, it's kind of unusual. I don't quite understand where that restriction would come that you can't change it.
You, you can change them. You can reset, you can resubdivide the property, yeah.
First, but, yeah. The, the lack of a stamp, any response to that?
This, you know, this wasn't a, you know, proposal for permits and those types of things. So this is a preliminary. So this is a preliminary type grading plan. Normally, yeah, you get stamps on it, but I don't know that it's that huge of an issue from this standpoint because were they to propose a development, we would have that.
And I know you'll have an answer for this. Why is this not leapfrogging?
So, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, you look at it, and it's out there, you know, you think, oh, we're going to put residential development out there, and we don't have residential development out there. I guess it depends on what you consider residential development. You have a base site care facility in Casa de Forests out there. So there are other types of housing facilities in that exact location. So this is a different type of housing. It's regular housing. Those are kind of specialized types of housing, but similar.
Got it. Any other questions, commissioners on for staff? I would like to go to the applicant who has his hand raised and welcome his comments. You heard a lot of good input from the public. What do you have to add?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I did. I'd like to say Mr. Steiners lived in Moro Bay for 20 years, so he has business everywhere, but he's a local. And I appreciate everything everyone said there, and I share their concerns in many ways. But we bought this property with the road in place, so we didn't design that access road. And we just, we're dealing with what we have. The other thing is, there's lots of site work that was done at the sewer plant, and had the same issues that were brought up. And coming north into town, you're not going to see our property first. You're going to see the sewer plant and the elderly home there. And our target for the one- and two-bedrooms was going to be employees at the adjacent facility. And so I just wanted to share that with you. We inherited the road, so.
Appreciate that, and thank you very much to listening. This is a very engaged community here, and I think you've heard some really responsible comments.
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Commissioners, now it's your turn. Joe, can I start with you?
Yeah, well, I'm afraid my remarks are going to be of a more general nature. I'm not qualified to comment on grading or the width of roads. But the list I have is significantly long about the inadequacies of the file, as I see it so far. So let me begin. First and foremost for me is the scale and the appearance of this project from the vantage point of the highway. This is a scenic viewpoint, and we need to have some rational sense of what this project would look like. And I see nothing in the file that can intelligently tell me the scope or the appearance or the perspective. Secondly, the proposal or concept includes a lot of, I'll call them departures, from the existing tract plan and zoning laws. And the file contains nothing of what I would regard as essential, which is the additional community benefits that should accrue from these departures from the norm or exceptions, if you will. And by that, I do not mean the direct consequences of the project. That is, additional revenues to the city or housing as part of what is a housing project, additional community benefits. And I'm not going to take the time to propose what these might be. I simply note that in this file, there's no mention of that. With respect to affordable housing and workforce housing, I couldn't agree more with the comments that are made. It's actually essential to this community. But what we need is the assurance that that kind of housing will be provided. And the in-lu fee offers no such assurance. One, the money generated by the in-lu fee is, given the inflation, the cost of housing is typically inadequate. And then it says nothing about the price of the land, much, which may also be acquired to produce this affordable housing at all levels of affordable housing and workforce housing. And likewise, there has to be a significant variation in the kinds of units proposed, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. So it's accommodating for workforce and various levels of low-income housing. I was surprised at the palette of materials and colors that are included in this, in the file seems to be irrelevant since it's borrowed from the previous project. The ad hoc committee business. Again, the complexity of the project and all of the departures and exceptions tell me that there are very significant consequences that stem from this project. And those consequences, for fear that there will be unintended negative consequences, have to be studied. And I'd hope that the ad hoc committee would provide us with a really firm foundation, a beginning as to what all these consequences might be so they could be studied. I don't see anything in the file remotely approaching a conclusion or a report as to what some of those consequences could be so that we could begin studying them. Also, if this project were to go forward, we have to think seriously and creatively as to what's the precedent value of this project. Because you can be assured that the neighboring landowners are looking very closely at this project and what it means in the future for their development. While I think it's probably not the role of the developer to school us and how we might distinguish this project from another project, someone has to be thinking about that. Because in short order, we will have many other requests for this kind of development. And you can't simply say, well, in that case, we'll say no to the second comer or the third comer, because you become very vulnerable to the notion that this is a capricious and arbitrary and quite likely illegal answer to the problem. So we have to have ways of convincingly distinguishing this project were it to go forward from other projects that I'm sure will be forthcoming. And then finally, and this is difficult for me to describe exactly what I'm thinking. But this whole process of this project coming before us seems to be sort of a bootstrapping exercise, or maybe it's an example of paying attention to the slippery slope. But what I see is this project that was started some ten or, this approval that was 12 or 15 years ago, or perhaps longer now, that was really conservation-minded with Escher lands set aside and a spacious layout. And we've moved to a notion of where somehow this might be upzoned to 12 or 15, and perhaps there might be sometime in the future even a greater density. And I just tell myself, the people who were responsible for the original approval of the tract, which was conservation-minded, would be appalled at the way everything has evolved to what we're considering right now. And I can't offer an explanation as to how that happened. I certainly know it wasn't the intent. And I suspect that if you went back to those people who voted for that initial approval, they would say if the consequence of our approval in 2009 was that we would be contemplating this project in 2023, we would not approve that earlier project. I'm fairly confident of that. So those are my reasons for, at this point, finding the file for the project in adequate.
Thank you, Joe. Eric?
Number one, I'm the new guy on this. This is my first discussion on this project. These guys have discussed it a little bit previously and has had other councils and commissions. But to me, it's a hodgepodge. It's a terrific hodgepodge right now of previous approvals, as Joe was saying, and new conditions and new ideas all, it's like someone, I think Terry, you called it making sausage, and this isn't even sausage. This is just some sort of bad quiche that's kind of cooking too long. Now, I do like the idea of more housing, especially small housing, a small number of bedroom studios, affordable by design or affordable because we restrict it. And I would love to see, I would have loved to have seen the project proposed, the 70-unit idea. But what I'm looking at is a smaller number of units, and I'm being asked to imagine the 70 units. But then I don't get to imagine, you know, the grading of serpentine and the slope changes, and looking at the heights of the buildings and so forth that are being proposed. For instance, the ones that are being proposed are 29 feet, and that's looked at from the upslope side according to the front elevations. And so on the downslope side, they're going to be 30-plus with retaining walls. And it's just.
I'm not sure that's right. Cindy, is that right? The height, isn't it an average?
Well, if you look at the drawing we're showing of the garage door front of the houses.
So the height, that's just the height of the building?
They're just showing 29 feet, but they're not measuring it from average national grade. So we really don't know. It very well could be what Commissioner Myers said.
Sorry to interrupt there.
You've lost me. You pitched me off there a second. Sorry. So essentially, in my mind, this needs to start over. And/or it needs to maintain what it was. But this hybrid thing where we have this hand saying that, and we've lost track of what was said in 2009, and everybody's sort of all over. I don't have a handle on it right now based on what I'm seeing. I'm not ready to make any decision or any recommendation hardly. But I want lower, smaller housing. I want, the city has asked us to create low-income housing and/or just by design, smaller housing such that it's market rate but affordable. That's, I think, primary in my concern. But in this specific location with the constraints of the scenic highway, the constraints of Escha, the constraints already placed in the site, the size of the buildable areas, it's, I really can't go anywhere with it.
Thanks. Mike?
Yeah, sometimes it's the new guy that sees clearly. You know, and I'll just say, I'll just go back where I started. I said that a conceptual designer proposal should include much more detail for this commission to make a decision. We hit on the number of units, the bedrooms. I mean, those got to be. And I think Eric just hit on that too, densities. You know, even studios, we can even do a studio type of design. You have a lot of those in the city where they have no room to do anything in San Francisco. Affordable housing ought to be and was one of our goals for the council. So we should get as much affordable housing as we can out of this. That should be our goal. And I think Councilmember Heller said that. And one of the things that really hit me is the applicant's team. Somebody on the team said something about, well, we need to rezone this before we do anything else. Well, that's not going to happen until we get the kind of detail and rights. Things that we need as a planning commission, rezoning is not even, we're not even near that. So, you know, there's nothing wrong with us sending that clear message that we need much more detail. It should include everything that's been brought forward, not only by staff, the community, but this planning commission. So I'll just leave it at that for now.
Chairman, Bill, can I read out Asia's comments?
Yeah.
Just for the sake of the developer?
Yeah, so let everybody know, even though Asia's not here tonight, I'm sure she's watching, so. Took the time to write this together, so, yeah.
These were just delivered to us this evening.
The bullet point, Eric?
So, I do, this is from Asia King. "I do not support allowing in-lu fees for affordable housing. I think affordable units must be developed on-site. I am in support of finding the highest and best use of this property on the condition of maximizing the number and variety of units provided for affordable and workforce housing, including extremely low to low moderate income deed restricted housing. I recommend that in order to allow for maximum density, the project must offer a higher than currently required percentage of affordable units. An increase in density should include a greater variety of unit sizes, including studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units without garages. I do not encourage the planning commission or city to require off-street parking for units with garages. I would like to see preliminary sketches of what the maximum number of units for this site would look like between 40 and 70, that's in parentheses, with consideration for open space conservation and for the site as a gateway view into and out of the city. I would also like to make it a requirement that at the development, whatever shape it takes, include the amenity of an onsite park, playground, walking paths, and sidewalks." And she did also ask the question about the flood plan that I brought up earlier.
I just want to tell that I hadn't even read Asia's email fully, but I think, like I said, the newest people see clearly. Asia's another newer planning commission that kind of said what I said, but much more eloquently in a memo, so. Good.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that, Mike.
You got it.
Okay, so this has been a valuable hearing. I hope staff agrees. I'm going to try to put some perspective on this in a summation. I'm trying to pull together a number of things, and I'm going to start with, we have an applicant and a property owner. And we have to, one, thank them for this effort. And I think they have been willing to work with the city towards our housing goals. I think that can't be overlooked. I think we have to recognize that, not only thank them, but then help them get there. I think that was the point of the hearing tonight, that it's not about what they didn't do, but what they might be able to do, and with direction. The housing goals are where we start. That is where it started with the previous council. I think how that is applied is where I felt they missed the mark. Housing goals are not just about housing, but it's about the kinds of housing. It's about how you apply them. It's about the specific sites. One of the things that the planning commission suggested in our goal process, and I hope Sarah might hear this one, is that Asia and I agreed to be a subcommittee that would focus just on housing, independent of this project, but look at some of the housing complexities that exist in Moro Bay to try to define where our opportunities might be. So comments like Jeff made tonight are very valuable because it really does depend on, is it low or very low or moderate? That's not an insignificant thing. The percentage is not an insignificant thing. So all of those things are a broader view, and also are there alternative sites to this one? We've heard a number of people talking about leapfrogging, which I think is a very real consideration. All that being said, let me go back to the complexity of the site. This is not just about housing. Every housing site is different. Some housing sites have less complexity or more obvious, better opportunities. This is a tough one. This is difficult. The strength of this site is that we have an applicant. And so how do we work with that applicant and give them that sort of opportunity in all honesty and all process? But we have to recognize the complexity of this site. It's been well stated what that complexity might be. It's the fact that it's on a hillside. It's grading. It's outside of town. We don't have great infrastructure. How would family housing, how would a child get to school from this site? From what I understand right now, there is no sidewalk, so they would have to take a bus or be driven. These are important things that I'm not saying mean that we don't have a project, but they have to be considered in the proposal. So I would start with the process. I'm saying, and I'll go back to our point and see if we can all nod our heads, is that an upzone on this project is not what the commission wants to see without a project. The reason is, an upzone cannot be conditioned to the same amount of detail that we can do with an actual application in a project. That project can be conceptual, but it has to be way further along than, and with great respect, what the applicant has submitted. We need more detail, more specificity if we're going to be able to say with certainty and confidence for this community that this is a development that can succeed. How we answer that simple question of a safe route to school, I'll start that as question one. Why would we approve an application that doesn't have that? I don't know. So with that, I'd say, here's my recommendations to the applicant. And again, if the commissioners nod, we're going in the right direction, Joe, yeah? Yeah. Um, I'm going to start with design. Uh, we really need a better design submittal. This is one unit type, which is probably not enough. Uh, the architecture is minimal. There's no up and downs, ins or outs, no balconies, no complexity or interest in the design. One of the reasons that's so important on this site is, as everybody has said, it's a gateway site. We are not going to start with a generic architectural treatment. The, the, the conceptual designs have to have an idea about how to do that. Second, you need better drawings. The drawings have to show a section through the hill. So we can actually see the heights of the buildings as they sit relative to the top of the hill and the bottom of the hill. The section should go all the way down to the, to Route 1. So we can see that the height differences and how they work. This is not a hard drawing to do. It's one that I think as an architect I would start with. And um, I think you guys can do it. And I think those things really collect into a better design idea because the site planning will impact the way this building looks from the street. Uh, the other drawing we need besides the section is gateway views from going, going both north and south to see what it looks like from the freeway. Uh, that's not hard to do again either, especially with today's, um, you know, fantastic computer programs. Um, I think we need to see it. I think the community needs to see it to have confidence of what you're proposing. The mix, the affordability percentage, um, I'd ask the applicant to take into consideration what he heard tonight. And um, to work with staff, um, we can come up with better solutions in terms of the mix. The conceptual plans were just as conceptual in terms of the mix. There was no thought or design to the mix as proposed. So for me, this was not really a conceptual plan in the term that I understand it or in the way we've established that process here at this planning commission for the past two plus years. Um, and that finally brings me to the process. Um, if I was a developer, I would say the same thing. I want an upzone before I spend a penny. Unfortunately, I don't think that's something that this commission will agree with or that the community wants. To build confidence in this project, we need, we need more. And to upzone it without a specific project, in my mind, would be a mistake. Are we nodding? We're nodding. That, that, um, you cannot condition an upzone to the near, to the degree that would be required to make this a successful project. Those are my points. Commissioners, please add or subtract.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that we speak the same language, but use different words. He says upzone, I said rezone. Doesn't matter, upzone, rezone, it's not going to happen. We're not ready for it unless we have the kind of detail that an upzone or rezone would require. Because we need, our community and our council need the confidence that we've done our work. So we're not even close to that. So the applicants should take everything they got, bring it back, and hopefully we can have more to deal with.
Thanks, Mike. Eric?
You're not in this town going to get more units unless they're small units.
Thank you, Eric. Joe?
I, I would like the applicant to address specifically the issue of additional community benefits. Some, some, some addressing of it.
Which would be percentage of affordability, the mix, as well as the infrastructure of a safe way to school.
Or other things.
Yeah, or other things, or is it at a minimum, Joe?
Like a park that Asia requested, like a park.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would like, I would like for him to be able to actually make a presentation on the subject, his thoughts, his offerings, countering ours, if you will, but address that issue.
I, I do, I do agree with Joe that because you're walking underneath what's called a hot zone, that there's four off-ramp, on-ramps in order to get over to where the bus stop would be. And that's without any pedestrian infrastructure currently. So that's a, that's a big one.
It's a tough one, yeah. Scott, you've heard from the commission, you've heard from the public. What do you, how do you want to frame this for our applicant? I know you've worked long and hard, and Cindy, thank you. How do we make sure that this is a willingness to work, but it's also setting a level of expectation?
No, that's good, uh, Chair Roshan. Uh, I actually very much appreciate the, the level of detail and comments from the commission this evening. I think it goes a long way to what the expectation is for our community and development of the site. So, um, job well done. Thank you. Um, I think we can, uh, work with the applicant and, and sit down and, uh, with them, with them and, uh, go over what the expectation is. I think, I mean, you were very clear this evening, which I very much appreciate. And I think that, um, they, I'm sure they have quite a lot of questions for us, but we do sit down with them and happy to do that, uh, and to go over things. And, uh, I'm sure if we need any assistance, I can, uh, reach out to the chair of the planning commission, might want to engage as well. So, uh, we have opportunity there.
Cindy, do you agree with the boss?
Yes, I do.
Thanks, everybody. I thought your comments were really fantastic and really helped us in this discussion. And to the applicants, uh, this is genuine. Um, if the commission can help again, um, you know, we're really open to it. And we want to thank you for your, your continued efforts, I hope. With that, our next item, do we have any unfinished business? Planning commissioner comments, future agenda items. Community director comments?
Um, just again to plug the city's goal setting process that will be held in, uh, the main auditorium building in the community center tomorrow, starting at 5:30. Please come out with your ideas and comments. We'd love to hear from you, as would the council.
Thank you. Joe?
I would like to just bring up a comment from Mr. Heller's letter and, and, and future agenda is potential, if we agree, agenda is discussions on, um, changing the, the, are discussing more thoroughly within our plans, the affordability. Uh, we, we say a certain number of affordable units, but we don't specifically say, you know, 10% extremely low and 10% to low and 5%, just random numbers. We, we just say affordable housing, it kind of this broad gesture without getting specific. And I think we should have a discussion about making it more specific. And I think we should also have.
Well, right now it's 10%, right?
Yeah, and I think what Commissioner Myers is getting at is, uh, and, uh, and former council member Heller, kind of pointed out, like, he's looked at some other ordinances, I believe, uh, and sees where some communities adopt breakdowns of the, like, that 10%, whatever it is. We want so much of that 10% to be at what, at what, what level. And so, um, again, I think, I think Chair President Roshan, you were also referring to the, the subcommittee that you formed with Commissioner.
Which will address that.
Yeah, so I think you have an opportunity there, uh, to, to have that conversation.
Love it. Betty, before you go, um, I did want everybody to know that we give awards out for people who stay for the whole meetings. And, and this might have been the first ever meeting that everybody stayed. I mean, that's pretty good. Joe?
I think it was at the last meeting that we, we, we talked about, um, uh, the possibility maybe of having planning commissions, uh, the commission is not sitting on the, on the stage, but actually being down on the ground floor of the, of the Veterans Center. And then fortuitously, we have this meeting here, which I thought was a, was an improvement over the usual dynamic. So we ought to think about maybe doing that in the future.
Zara, the city council could think about that too. It used to be, we heard from our history folks, that that's the way it used to be, is you didn't have a dais, you know? Yeah.
You know, in Mexico or in some Central American countries, they actually hold their meetings in a public plaza, and everybody's just in the plaza together and they're around tables. And so everybody's at the same level and the same superior, inferior sort of situation.
Well, again, thank you, Zara. Good luck tomorrow. Thank you for being here. And, uh, unless I hear any other comments, I'd like to adjourn. Thank you again.